All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to County Commissioners Meeting, June the 2nd, 2016. And if you would, probably before I should, I do that, I should announce that Commissioner Phillips is with us by phone this morning. So, he will be part of the process today by telephone. Please join me, if you will, in a moment of silence. Join me now in place to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we have a public comment period and our regular Colonel Waltman from the Gap.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Lieutenant Colonel Waltman from Ford Indian Town Gap with information on the events and activities back at the Gap. Well, we're into the, our heavy season of training at Indian Town Gap this week, just under 6,000 individuals training back there. Next week, over 8,000 individual week training at Ford Indian Town Gap. In the month of June, we have explosives demolition, a full schedule of explosives demolition training from the 8th to the 13th, 15th and 16th, and then the 19th to the 29th of June. Mortar fire coming up on the 10th to the 12th, and then artillery fire on the 21st to the 23rd, and folks in the area may see increased or hear increased activity back at the Gap. I always like to identify and highlight the support that we receive from the local community, the local fire departments, and then the support that we, mutual aid we provide. For the fiscal year so far, to the townships in the northern part of the county, to Union Township, 32 times we've been called off post, and to East Hanover Township, 26 times. In the month of May, three auto accidents in East Hanover Township, and then three medical assists in the Union Township. And because of the highway network out there, those responses are mainly into East Hanover Township and Union Township. I want to highlight a PennDOT construction or refurbishing, bridge replacement on Route 443 on Ford Indian Town Gap. During the week of the 20th of June, what we'll be doing is on Asher Minor Road Bridge, which is on 443 as you're beginning the hill going up to Moonshine Church and over the mountain. That bridge will be replaced and closed that road, but what we're going to be doing is, there's a tank trail just off the side of the road, we'll be paving that as a bypass to the bridge. So, the week of the 20th of June, we'll start paving a portion of the tank trail that the public vehicles will be traveling on, and we'll be setting barriers there also. On the 5th of July, a temporary signal light will be in place and traffic will be diverted onto that tank trail. We'll have a press announcement for that in the next few days to put that information out to the public. And then in the end of July, the Clement Avenue Bridge, as you're coming 443 from the west onto post, that bridge reconstruction and replacement will begin, but that will remain open with one lane access at all times for the duration of that project. So, beginning the 20th of June, we'll do that paving on our tank trail, and then the 5th of July, that temporary light as they remove the bridge on 443 that goes up over the mountain. And then the final thing I have this morning, just to save the date, in July is our annual butterfly tours that we open up, the grasslands in the training area, for those interested to come and visit and take a look at the last area of the Regal Fritterly Butterfly east of Indiana. It's at Ford Indian Town Gap, and we do this annually. Last year, over 500 people from around the world came. That'll be the 1st and 2nd of July, Friday, Saturday, and then the 8th and 9th of July. So, stay tuned for more information on that and the exact process of where to meet, and then for the transportation out to the Gap. In addition to that information, I just wanted to highlight the cooperative project that we started with Zoo America in 2011. It's in the fifth season of this partnership of raising the Regal Fritterly Butterfly and releasing to new areas of Pennsylvania. So, in the fall, last fall, there were female butterflies taken to Zoo America. They've been taking care of those, and once the eggs hatch in the Calvary Caterpillars, they'll be distributed throughout the area in Zoo America's labs and looking at butterfly houses in the area and as, and other active reintroduction sites. It's a partnership with Zoo America and also the Pennsylvania Game Commission with funding coming from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Wildlife Resource Conservation Program. So, the 1st and 2nd, and the 8th and 9th of July, the place to be is looking at butterflies at Ford Indian Town Gap. So, pending your questions, that's all I have this morning.
Anyone have questions for the Colonel?
I have none.
John.
People just show up for those tours, or is there any registration involved?
There's no registration, but we'll have information on where to assemble, and then there's a bit of a safety briefing on, you know, on activities and walking through the areas, and then introduction to the area and what you'll be able to see. So, if folks like us on Facebook, Ford Indian Town Gap, that information will be out, and as soon as we get the specifics of where to assemble, we'll get that out to everyone.
I'd just like to say, thank you. Wow, that was a really packed full of information presentation, very succinct and informative. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. As always, we're going to miss you when you're gone.
Well, it's been a great experience in representing Ford Indian Town Gap. As a local native of Lebanon County in Cornwallboro.
Probably are going to be with us for what?
Yeah, no, more than usual. Couple months.
All right, then we're ready for the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? And there was one correction, you got that, and you got that too, Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
It was just the announcement about the videotaping.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as printed. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. And then now the Treasurers report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We had receipts on May 31st and June the 1st of $1,704,334.83. The total cash is $4,700,921.42. We had expenditures this week at $2,143,875.36. Our tax claim is $118,057.64. So, that leaves us a cash balance of $2,438,988.42.
Okay. Any questions for the Treasurer before we have a motion to approve the Treasurer's report? All right, I'll.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the Treasurer's report as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I just have one more thing I got to do here quick, and goodness to you guys. Department of Ag will be doing compliance checks in candidacy throughout Lebanon County. It'll be the.
For dog licenses?
Pardon?
For dog licenses?
And rabies.
Okay.
And, yep, and for rabies compliances. They will be starting out the week of June 6th. So, invite them in.
Good opportunity to get that information out there.
Thank you, Sally.
Yep, I think Department of Ag also probably.
We approved the Treasurer's report. We'll move on to personnel items, and in the absence of our human resources folks who are at a CCAP conference, our county administrator will handle that.
Okay. The resignations and terminations. Amy Bean, telecommunicator and EMA, resigning for personal reasons effective June 4th. Don Klopp, County Clerk C in the Treasurer's Office, resigning effective May 25th. Tiffany Sheets, a correctional officer at the prison, resigning effective May 18th. And Matthew Lesher, a part-time correctional officer, prison, resigning effective June 10th.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resignations and terminations as read. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resignations and terminations are approved.
Changes of, I'm sorry, lease of absence. Shannon Garrison at the Area Agency on Aging, seeking a six to eight week leave for family and medical leave, under the Family Medical Leave Act, effective May 25th.
I'll approve it.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the leave of absence. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Under changes of statuses, status, transfers and promotions, Catherine Greeninger in domestic relations going from an imaging clerk to a team clerk from 8/16/82 bi-weekly to 8/78/09 bi-weekly, effective June 6th. At the prison, Amber Swartz going from a casual part-time CO to a full-time CO from a rate of $12 an hour to $13.71 per hour, effective June 5th. Lorianna Thomas at the prison going from a casual part-time CO to a full-time CO, also from $12 an hour to $13.71 an hour, and also June, effective June 5th.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the changes of status. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? They're approved.
Other transactions, motion, looking for a motion to approve. Treasurer Sally Newans requests to hire casual employee, call it RNS, temporarily to work in her office from June 13th through June 17th. Anticipated total hours would be, would not exceed 35 hours.
I'll approve.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the additional hours in the Treasurer's office. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Next, request to approve the 2016 Civil Service Compensation Plan, which is necessary for, to provide to the Commonwealth on behalf of Children Youth Services, MHIDEI, Area Agency on Aging, and the Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse for the 2016-2017 fiscal year. I believe Michelle had circulated that to you earlier.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Civil Service Plan as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Next, seeking approval for collective bargaining agreement between the County of Lebanon and the Chocolate Workers Union Local 464, which is the EMA telecommunications. This would be an agreement effective January 1st, 2016, through December 31st, 2019. Some of the highlights are that it is a four-year term agreement, and the wage increases would be 3.5% for the years 2016 and 2019, and 3% for the years 2017 and 2018. This would also include an increase of the employees' contribution to our health insurance costs, increased deductibles, which will come up to the level of the non-union throughout the course of this contract, and also increased co-pays for doctor visits and prescriptions. And I have some, I have a highlight sheet if anyone's interested in that. Those are the main things.
I'll approve it.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the EMA contract. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's approved. John.
How many employees are returned?
Twenty-eight.
Okay. You say 3.5% for 2016?
It's, it's, it's 3.5, 3, 3.5, 3. So, yeah, 3.5 for 2016.
2016, 3 for 2017 and 2018.
3, 3.5, 3, 3. I'm sorry, that was way wrong. Seventeen is 3.5. Sixteen is 3.5, seventeen is 3. Eighteen is 3.5.
And nineteen?
And nineteen is 3. Yes, I'm sorry.
I think you got that backwards, Jake. Nineteen is 3.5. According to this, 3.5 wage increase for 2016 and 2019.
Yes.
Three and a half. Two, three.
Three, three.
Three and a half.
Final offer. Take it or leave it. All right, thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
To the hires. I'm proposing to hire an Area Agency Agent, Susan McCoville, as an Aging Care Manager II, Grade 10, Step 1, rate of 1,230.62 bi-weekly, effective June 6th, 2016.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the hiring. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's approved.
And to hire in Treasurer's Office, Tina Tobias, County Clerk C, Grade 5, Step 1, 762.36 bi-weekly, effective June 6th.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the hiring in the Treasurer's Office. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
And then the Salary Board would be the, there's nothing additional from all of the credit.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the Salary Board changes as included in the Personnel Report. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Conference at seminar requests.
Boy, you must be living.
Because it's a small list, right? I can see that.
Approaching summer, spring and the fall is.
Under mandated requests, David Arnold, the District Attorney, plans to attend the 2016 Annual Summer Meeting in Bedford, July 10th through the 14th. The fee is $825 plus lodging, meals, parking and tolls, and this will provide for him six credit hours toward the continuing legal education requirements.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the District Attorney's attendance at his conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
If it's all right, I'm going to group these next three together. I'll just read the differences. First being Jeffrey Baylor of Area Agency on Aging, would like to attend the knowledge sharing session for SMAS administrators in Gettysburg, June 23rd, for $50 plus mileage meals and parking. Hannah Devine would also like to attend the same seminar from Area Agency on Aging on June 22nd, Day 4, for $90 plus mileage meals, parking and tolls. And Michael Collins from the Area Agency on Aging also attending the same session on June 22nd and 23rd for $150 plus mileage meals and parking. So, they're going at just different times to the same, to the same event.
You have a motion for the requested conferences?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the requested conferences. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
And then lastly, Carol Davies, Director at the Area Agency on Aging, would like to attend the P4A, that's the Department of Aging Quarterly Meeting in State College, June 8th and 9th. Cost to that is $50 plus lodging and a mileage plus parking.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Carol Davies' attendance at a conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. Let's see if they're cheap right here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Welcome to your first Commissioners Meeting in your new role.
Thank you. I heard I got lucky with Blue Shirt Thursday.
You did.
I didn't know.
You're here to talk to us about the impaired driver grant, right?
Correct. The District Attorney's Office is applying for a $30,000 grant to repend up for the impaired driving grant. This is a grant we've applied for and successfully received in previous years. This grant is used for DUI enforcement in the form of DUI checkpoints, roving patrols, and it also is used for cops and shops enforcement, which is enforcement based on underage drinking, and to adults who provide alcohol to underage persons attempting to obtain alcohol. The grant runs for one year. The very last page has a breakdown of, a brief budget summary, which I can go over very quickly. Item 1 is $4,300 for salaries and wages for the project coordinators, who is Jim Brown, who's my executive assistant in the office, and myself, to be the project director. There's Budget for Travel, which is a conference which is required to be attended by all persons who are involved in this grant. They have an annual conference which they provide legal updates and guidelines on best practices to operate these types of functions, and that's funded through the grant. Contractual services of $1,750, which is for a phlebotomist, and to back pay an EMA dispatcher, which is used to support when we do operations, to not burden the existing dispatchers when they, when, when we're working. Equipment and repair of equipment, which is $3,400. There's two vehicles and a trailer which are used to support this initiative, and also to obtain safety equipment, such as vests and cones and lights, flares, electronic flares, and that type of thing. And $18,900 for reimbursement for overtime for officers and deputy sheriffs who are now participating in checkpoints to allow us to properly conduct them. We've had some trouble in the past getting manpower for the static checkpoint, which is a fixed checkpoint, and fortunately, we have some deputy sheriffs who have received the checkpoint training, and Sheriff Klinger has, has allowed his deputies to participate. And in fact, we have a checkpoint coming up this, this weekend, and several sheriffs are participating in it, which is allowing us to do it. They, they don't participate in the enforcement, they're more of the support and security of the scene. Without their, their participation, this, this wouldn't be happening this weekend.
Is the area of the county a secret?
It is, it is not something that's announced till, till that particular night, but the area is, is chosen based on accident information, previous DUI enforcement information, information obtained from the locality, the local municipality where it's occurring, and the experience of previous grants and the success or the successful operation of having them in that location.
Interesting.
Things like, things like officer safety, you know, have to be involved too. You clearly don't hold it on a curb or someplace where, where the driver's approaching might, might be a risk where the, where the officers were at the scene.
It's nice to hear again our sheriff and the cooperative effort between the departments. I appreciate that effort as well.
He employs some retired police officers, so it, it makes sense to utilize their experience and, and training they've received in their other jobs when, when we're in need of manpower. So, it's, it's a good example of cooperation.
Should we have a motion to approve the grant?
I'll approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the application for the impaired driver grant. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The grant is approved, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
You got questions?
Oh, John. Oh, Gordon.
Every, every year, we get a multitude of news releases from the District Attorney's DUI program concerning, on the most part, DUI checkpoints and roving patrols. How much emphasis is being put on cops and shops these days? Is that, is that still a viable option?
That's still, that's still a viable option. In fact, it's a timely question, Gordon, because we actually have a training tomorrow for officers who are interested in participating in, in the cops and shops program. All of this, all of the grant operations require participating police officers and their agencies to be involved in the training prior to being able to participate in, in the program. And not only does it discuss operations, but it discusses legal issues, you know, search and seizure issues and things along those lines. So, it is, it is something that's, that's part of this focus. There's four cops and shops initiatives planned for the following grant year. There would be two static checkpoints planned, and there would be five roving patrols planned for that $30,000 budget. And they are incumbent upon participating police officers to occur. So, there have been previous years, I believe, where they couldn't spend the entire amount of money because specifically for static checkpoints, they had trouble getting manpower to participate in them. But the cops and shops part of it is, is still part of the initiative.
Okay, thank you. Thirty thousand, is that the same as last year's?
That's correct.
What kind of body is there from the municipal police departments? Most of them participate, so have such small staffs.
You have a core group of, of officers who are interested in it. The roving patrols are, are the most popular to participate in because you, less staff is required, and it's, it's more difficult to get enough officers together for a static checkpoint, and the participation of, of the sheriff's office has really made a difference in this, because not everybody involved in that detail is, is a line officer or a secondary officer, where assessments are made of operators of vehicles based on your training, and then there's secondary assessments made, and those officers need to be trained specifically in standard field security testing and, and, you know, drug recognition training, those types of things. So, the buy-in is, is pretty good for the general grant. It's, it's sometimes getting enough people together to do the static checkpoint.
How many does that take?
It takes pretty many. It probably takes, I'm not sure what we have for this weekend, but I'm going to say at least 13, 14, 15 officers, you know, to properly do it, and that would be a, a two-way checkpoint.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Since you have reinforcements, Kevin, for having introduced the, talked with you.
With me today is Jim Dunmore, Executive Director of the County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse, and Dennis Good. He is the Fiscal Director for both MHIDEI and Drug and Alcohol. I'm here to present several items for MHIDE, MHIDEI.
You can.
I know I can.
So I'll just start standing.
I practice every night before I go to sleep, and I still can't do it. And Jim is here to discuss some issues related to drug and alcohol. That's what you.
Which is easier to say. I can say that.
So, he's going to present his contract, so we'll present his, we'll take separate motions on each one. Since Dennis does the, the heavy lifting on it, you know.
He's here just to make sure that they both do it correctly.
That's correct. He keeps us in line. We have three items for MHIDEI, the first of which is amendments to our 2015-16 provider contracts. As you know, we have to come here periodically throughout the year to update those contracts, and usually it is because a consumer or a family member selected a new provider. and usually it is because a consumer or family member selected a new provider, or a consumer needed additional or different services that we had not originally contracted for. So at this point, as we're closing out 15-16, we have 17 amendments to our contracts, to 17 providers. There are a number of services in some of those contracts, but the total changes result in an increase of $100,813.
One hundred?
$100,813.
Correct.
And this money is already within our budget. We're not looking for new funds. It will just be a shuffling of the dollars to assure that we can fund those amendments.
Awesome.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the contract amendments as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you. Next, we have our 16-17 provider contracts. As we start the new year on July 1st, we have to develop all new contracts with those service providers. The total of the contracts is $2,963,184, just shy of $3 million for services. And surprisingly, it is a reduction of $172,730. And I believe, Dennis, if I'm correct, the reduction resulted from we had, primarily because we had two high-cost consumers that we were serving, and one of them is moving into the intellectual disabilities waiver, which will now fund his care. And then there was another gentleman who was, another person, I'm not sure if it was no, a female, who was getting respite services. That was a high-end cost for us, and that service is not necessary anymore. So again, the total of those contracts is $2,963,184. The mental health total is $1,606,857. The non-waiver contracts for the intellectual disabilities unit is $616,722. And the waiver portion of the intellectual disabilities contract is $20,731. And our early intervention program has a total budget of $675,246. And then unrelated to the direct care services, we do have agency support services for things like elevator maintenance, you know, maintenance on our computer and fax machine, electronic devices, janitorial supplies, and those kind of things. So we have total contracts there for 16-17 of $43,628. So that summarizes all of the contracts at this point for 16-17. Of course, we don't know what the 16-17 state budget will be yet, but we're anticipating there will be no increases. So we're working with the providers to develop the contracts, and if numbers change, then we will be in again with contract amendments. And there are any questions on 16-17?
Jamie has a question. Either way, yeah, why don't we take the motion?
I move to approve the 16-17 provider contract.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Jamie. Just in terms of waiting lists, where do you stand in terms of waiting lists for any of the services?
We do have some waiting lists for psychiatric services. We have some waiting lists for intellectual disability services. I don't think they change dramatically.
And that's purely a funding issue?
No.
Or is it a staffing issue?
It's, for some people in the ID unit, it is funding issues. In psychiatric waiting lists, it's for lack of adequate number of service providers, just not enough psychiatrists. It's not, certainly, it's not an issue only delays Leaveney County, it's a statewide, a nationwide issue. There is a shortage of psychiatry services. We're working with our five-county group, CADC, Capital Air Behavioral Collaborate, to develop incentives to recruit and retain new psychiatrists. Suicide investment dollars are going to try and assist in that matter. And also, the telepsychiatry is being used in some areas.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the contracts as presented by Mr. Schramm. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? They're approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then finally, we do have a proposed budget for fiscal year 16-17. Again, this is all based on an assumption that we would get the same dollars we got for 15-16, because we really don't know how it would play out. Actually, our $15,160 only got squared away a couple of months ago before the fiscal year is coming to a close. But for 16-17, our total agency budget is proposed to be $7,980,633. That is an increase of $162,000. So it's almost the same as it was for the year that we're finishing up here. And to all the dust settles, the salary benefit increases account for $127,000 of the increase, and indirect costs account for $56,000 in increases. So beyond those two items, it's pretty much a light fund.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the budget as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you very much for your support. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
How many years have you had flat funding?
Maybe Dennis can help. I'm just going to take a ballpark figure. We've had flat funding for approximately five or six years, but prior to that, it was not flat because we had a D. So if you take out that year, probably been, you know, at least 10 years of relatively flat funding. You know, maybe a couple bucks here and there, but there's no dramatic increases over the years.
Have you had more clients over the years?
Yes, we serve more people, and I think part of what helps us is that the implementation of health choices and the MA funding for consumers helps us, because many more people are eligible for those services now than in the past. So we're hanging in there. And of course, that's not exclusive to our county, that's all. So we're doing the best we can, what we can.
Mr. Dunmoyer. Good morning. When you're in this thing, you can do whatever you want. I'm here today, yeah, my name's Jim Dunmoyer, I'm with the Leaveney County Drug and Alcohol Commission. I'm here, the first thing I'd like to present to the commissioners is the 2016-2017 Drug and Alcohol Budget. This year, the total revenue and expenditures for 2016-17, the budget is going to be $1,193,174. This amount reflects a decrease of $80,349, which is about a 6% decrease in our budget. There's some reasons for that. We are continuing to serve about the same amount of people, if not more people, but with the expansion of MA medical assistance, it is driving our costs down, and medical assistance is covering more costs, especially when you're talking about rehab stays and detox stays. So that's a factor for the $80,349 lower budget this year. One thing of note, I'm looking at this budget summary report that was prepared by Dennis Good, and I look at number three of note, the prevention expenditures were increased by $25,353. And the reason that was increased was because, I'm sure the board recalls, that we did not fill the position of Mr. Count, Robert Count, and that saved $25,353. And what we did was, we turned around and put it right back into prevention services. So that's why that went up. And if you look at number four, the reason we could do that with the prevention, decrease in our prevention money, was our treatment expenditures, like I said, are down this year. Our treatment expenditures for the year has decreased by $108,000. The two big factors in that is the methadone has decreased by $57,000, and our rehab is down over $50,000. So those two big cost centers totaling $108,000 has brought that, you know, the treatment down. You factor in the increase in that prevention cost, that's where you come up with $80,000. It is a lower budget than the previous year. The previous year, our budget was 1.273,523. And if you look, page three of that handout, or page four, you'll see the five-year comparison of our budgets. They pretty much remain the same. We talked about base, flat funding has been flat in our AUC as well. As Kevin spoke earlier, we did take that same 10% cut six years ago or so. So our funding has remained flat as well, so.
For the 10 years?
For the 10 years, yes. And as in prior years, we're not requesting any support from the county general fund. And I would ask that you accept this budget for 2016-2017.
I do have one question.
Yes, sure.
You had a decrease in the methadone clinic. Is that the guidelines that you established and you explained to us a while back that created that?
Well, initially, in the year, we have a limit of 65 county-funded people, and earlier in the year, we were probably running about 50 clients. So we were under our limit, which was driving that cost down. But when I left the office today, I think we're over 60. So we're back up to getting close to our limit. The major reason for the costs being driven down is the medical assistance. Medical assistance is paying for a lot of services that they didn't pay for before.
You are, you have established and are enforcing guidelines as to how long they can receive the treatment.
Yes, me and their director have come to an understanding of two years. And then, you know, it's a process where they get involved in two years, as opposed to how.
Is that applied to MA clients to?
MA clients I don't pay for, so I can't establish.
So the answer's no?
The answer is best practice is two years. And I would hope that regardless of how the funding source is, that the clinic would do what's best clinically for the fund. But I couldn't make that decision. I mean, with county people being funded and me being involved, I definitely know, you know, the two-year time.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the Drug and Alcohol Budget?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the budget as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you. Dennis, before I move on, is there anything you want to add as far as the summary goes?
No, you covered pretty good. We've been at that 1.2 million now for X number of years, and I guess the only thing I would say is because how the MA is covering costs that it didn't cover before, Jim's now finding different things to spend the money on, so he's working in a little, as the treatment costs go down, prevention will go up, and he still has plenty of places to spend that money.
The second thing I have to present to the commissioners today is the summary of contracts for fiscal year 2016-2017. I would like to direct your attention to page two of the summary of contracts. Under compass mark, again, you will see the addition of prevention specialists. The prevention specialist, the cap cost on that is $42,800. And then right below that, you'll see a new category of $57,500. That used to be $32,500. And with that $25,000 I spoke about, the savings, that's what bumps it up to $57,500. So it's no new money, it's just money, I guess it is new money, it is new money, I guess, but it gives us the ability to increase services by $25,000 under our provider compass mark. And then on page seven, if I can direct you to page seven, the only addition to contracts for the year 2016-17, Pyramid Healthcare, we added Hillside Facility. The type of services that Hillside provides, they provide detox, short-term rehab, as well as long-term rehab. So they are the only addition, and only provider that has been added as far as contracts go, and we have not deleted any contracts. We continue to have the same contracts with the addition of Hillside. And those are the only two changes that appear on the summary of contracts for 2016-2017.
Move to approve.
I have a motion for Mr. Phillips.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the Drug and Alcohol Contracts as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? They're approved. Thank you, sir. Dennis, thank you much.
Good morning.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Morning.
Good morning, George.
Mr. Phillips, he's, he looks a little anemic this morning, but.
Oh, okay. I'll tell you what, this is getting more and more high-tech here.
Good morning, Mr. Phillips. I hope that you're not interrupting your vacation somewhere.
I'm at the parking lot.
You part of the fireworks, or are you just in preparation? Mr. Phillips, Slits, and Mr. Ames, I'm here again on the LURDA situation. Last time I was here, I was asked by Mr. Slits to provide information as far as those parties. That was provided, I think it was as complete as I thought it could be made. If there was anything else, I would be happy to provide it, but I don't know what else I could provide at this point in time. But I would like, again, to bring up the request for LURDA approval of that project. It has been approved by the township. The school district has approved, if subject to the county's approval. And I would ask if there are any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I would like to request your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the LURDA that's been in consideration and is presented by Attorney Christensen. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion to approve the LURDA indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Aye. Motion carries to one.
Thank you very much for your time.
I have a question. I wasn't at the meeting where you were here before. Could you just real quick tell me, what it is? I mean, where's it located?
It is located on Bournersville Road.
Yeah, I know where it's at, okay. I know where it's at. Now, it's a warehouse, not, yes and no?
It, it is being constructed as the ability to make it a warehouse or a production unit. I've built a couple of them, and basically, you start out usually with producing something on one end of it and using the other part for storage. At this point in time, I cannot tell you as to who the ultimate occupant would be.
Okay, the people building the facility?
Yes, sir.
Where are they from?
In Ridge Line, they are from Virginia. I provided to the county commissioners, and I'm sure that Jamie can provide a copy to you as to who the company is and its entire background. They have over a million, over, I think it's six million square feet. They have projects throughout the eastern seaport.
And, and all the other places they're at, are they on the LURDA's?
To the best of my knowledge, they are. I cannot answer that because I do not know all of them. I can tell you that the four in Pennsylvania that they own have are on your LURDA.
Yes.
They're in Ashburn, Virginia.
Okay, that's what I wanted to say.
Are there any other questions?
No, no.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. How's your mitigation grant?
Morning, John.
Morning.
How are you?
Doing good.
Welcome.
Thank you, John. Morning. The reason I'm here today is a request for permission to proceed to apply for a grant from the federal government to update our head waterization plan. We got a five-year plan, and we've done, this is the second time we've done it. This will be the third time in the year. And the federal government has seventy-five percent of the funds available for us to do that. The commission approves to proceed.
And the total amount of the grant?
The total amount of the grant will be fifty-six thousand three hundred. The request, seventy-five percent of the match was forty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
The project is fifty-six three hundred?
The project is fifty-six. Their grant is forty-two.
The twenty-five percent is, is county-funded.
And this is a, this is a forty-one month grant period. The grant period's open. Our plan does not expire until 2018. But it takes eighteen to twenty months work of work to update the plan. And since the grant period is now, there won't be a grant period available again in the next period by the time our plan would expire. So that's, that's the reason for applying for it.
Okay. Any questions for John? Any questions, Commissioner?
Just to draw this out of John, I guess in the past, the Grady's firm did.
MCM Consulting is, that's where the, that's where the original plans were done. Originally, it was done by, I can't remember who it was, Delta Development.
Yes.
And then we converted the plan over to MCM Consulting. And we anticipate using MCM Consulting again, just to complete the plan again, which, which involves a lot of the county office's assessment, planning, us, GIS. There's a lot involved with the county office. It's going through this process. Thank you.
All right, now I have a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the hazard material mitigation grant. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Or approved?
Thank you very much. Thank you, John.
Two questions.
Okay. We'll head here, that's good. However, Justin Mandell is here, along with Mike Swider. Do you guys want to check? Save a little bit of this dead item and then. Questions? Yeah, those, would you introduce yourself for the press, folks in attendance?
Sure. Good morning. My name is Justin Mandell. I am a commercial real estate developer with Aspen Hill Partners.
Back in, may have been February, but definitely somewhere in February, March, Mr. Swider and Justin came in to see me, to talk about the potential and their interest in a piece of property the county owns along East Walnut Street, adjacent to the driver's center. The county owns approximately thirteen acres of that area, which actually wraps, goes from next to the driver's center, wraps around the back of the driver's center, the back of the armory, and includes the fire school. That's the entire parcel. The interest that is expressed is in four and a half acres approximately that fronts on East Walnut Street as East Walnut, that's the bend around to King Street. And so we talked a little about the history. We've had some interest in that property in the past, and just it materialized. I talked a little about that with them. And there is, there's, there's now a proposed sales agreement for that, which has gone back and forth a little bit between the county and, and Mr. Mandell to fine-tune, I guess, the offer and fine-tune some of the, some of the provisions in there of the agreement. And it has been, it's been reviewed by council, by the county solicitors and commissioners. You've each been given a copy of it. There were some changes to it just as recently as yesterday. And so at this point, maybe I'll turn it over for you to explain the offer. And then we could go to the commissioners for any questions. Is there any?
Sure. Thank you, Jamie. The sales agreement that you have in front of you is for the purchase of, I believe it's four and a quarter, between four and four and a half acres. The exact boundaries to be determined with a survey. Do you need some additional copies?
I don't know if I do. I may sum myself, but you guys have to find out.
So our, our process that we follow is a period of time to perform our due diligence. Investigate the environmental circumstances of the property, the geotechnical circumstances of the property. And we also need to accordingly apply and receive permits for our proposed use, uses in this case with the city, with PENDOT, and with the appropriate stormwater environmental agencies. And so that process takes our study period. And the agreement that you have details the terms under which we will conduct our due diligence and provide for extensions where they may be necessary. And the diagram that you have clearly shows the, the area that we have an interest in developing for our tenants. And, and clearly delineates the, the welllands area that we have no, no interest in developing or even abutting on the opposite side of, it's called Metro Drive. And that, and that's a summary of, of our, of our sales agreement. Are there any specific items?
Do you want to talk about the, the compensation of the offer and the deposits, I guess?
Sure. So the sale, the proposed purchase price is seven hundred thousand dollars, which is above the appraised value of the property. There are a number of deposits that are detailed in the sales agreement. We're proposing to place, I'm sorry, five thousand dollars for the initial nine-month study period. We have the option to extend our study period for four additional three-month periods at a cost of ninety days, sorry, at a cost of five thousand dollars for each of those extension periods. We've also incorporated two additional extensions that come with deposits that are non-applicable. And so the effect of those deposits is that they will increase the sale price. So if our study period takes in excess of the initial study period, the cost of the deposits is added to, to the purchase price.
And those prices, those costs are ten thousand dollars each?
That's correct. So if we, in fact, take the entire study period that's detailed here prior to closing, we will deliver seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the county at closing, less the applicable deposits of forty thousand dollars. Sorry, twenty thousand dollars.
They would apply to the sale?
That's right. So the, the initial ten thousand, sorry, the initial five thousand dollar deposit and the additional, the four additional three-month deposits would all be applied towards the purchase price. The additional, the two ten thousand dollar deposits will be in excess of the purchase price.
So potentially, the study period could go, initially, it's nine months. It could go to a year and nine months. Is that how I understand it?
That's correct. That's correct.
And if, if after nine months?
So, so yeah, so, so why don't we just, should I walk through kind of the hypothetical scenario?
Yeah.
Okay. So upon signing of the sales agreement, we'll have nine months. We will deliver a deposit to our title agent, who will hold that deposit for five thousand dollars on behalf of the county. We'll have nine months from that period to begin our due diligence and, and the main activities that I discussed. We will be signing leases with our tenants. We'll be discussing our, our proposed project with various agencies like PENDOT and the planning commission that has authority over this particular parcel. And any other environmental outside agencies that are appropriate. That process could, could be completed within nine months or we may need an extension. At the end of nine months, we will deliver an additional five thousand dollars for the first of, of one of those four three-month extensions. And that process every three months, if we are not prepared to, if we have received all of our permits or we're not in a position to close, we will continue to extend for an additional three months upon delivering an additional five thousand dollars. That's the first two extensions. The second two of those three-month extensions would be ten thousand dollars, and that money would be applicable, sorry, non-applicable. So up until the first, so after nine months, after one year, after one year and three months, we will have paid fifteen thousand dollars, which will be non-refundable to the county. So if we were to terminate the agreement at that point, the county would keep those funds. If we need to extend beyond that time period, there would be additional payments of ten thousand dollars for the last two deposits, which will be non-applicable to the county. So at closing, at the time of closing, we would have paid ten, what is that, four, five, thirty-five thousand dollars to the county, of which fifteen thousand dollars is applicable to the sale price. So at closing, we would deliver seven hundred and five thousand dollars additional.
Third number of ways.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah. Do you have any more?
Basically, what, what we're trying to structure here is a situation where if we actually need additional time, there's a benefit to the county. It increases the sales price to, to you.
Do you have more? Do you have more questions as you go? What is your preference?
I'm happy to field questions at any time.
Okay. Well, two things that you've said so far trouble me. And one is that when the county was first approached, my, one requirement was that the wetland be preserved. And I was told that the company would be willing to pay for making that happen. In other words, the subdivision fees and things like that, because you were not interested in buying the whole parcel once you learned out the sensitivities of that precious resource that we have at the headwaters to the Quiddamit Lake Creek. And that being said, there is nothing in this agreement that says you will pay for the subdivision to preserve that land. Either you, you know, keep that word or you don't. And if you don't, that speaks to me that I don't want to vote for this because I don't find it in good business practice to make a promise that's not kept. And the second question that I have is the initial five thousand dollars. It's my understanding the company wants to walk away and get half their money back, and five thousand dollars does not cover all of our expenses. And I'm, I'm talking about additional assessments or appraisals and attorney's fees and things of that nature. That five thousand dollars, none of that should be refunded to the company if you walk away from it. You're approaching us to buy it. You've done a lot of due diligence already. Five thousand dollars is not going to break you, but it will cover our expenses. So I, I, I don't think that that's an acceptable part of the, the agreement.
Before the replies, could I just interject something here? To the first question, sort of being the intermediary between Mr. Mandell and the commissioners, I believe what he expressed, and as it says on this photo, this aerial, their recommendation was that that be put into a conservation easement. And I think the offer was that, that they would be willing to assist with that. Now, I think where we are is a definition of assist, and what that was, that was intended to mean, that could mean monetary, it could mean facilitate, and I, I don't know. So I just wanted to clarify how it was phrased, and maybe from there you could, that's you.
Okay. Well, I, I think what's important, Commissioner Litz, is, is what you believe you've heard. So I don't want to dispute any, anything that you've, you've said in that regard. However, we do not have any interest, and never have had any interest, in the portion of the county property that is on the other side. It's, it's on this exhibit, it's Career Drive, I believe it's called either Career Drive or Metro Drive. Any of the land that is to the west of, of that road has never been a part of our development, has never been contemplated for development, at least by, by my company. We approach the county because we have an opportunity to develop the vacant parcel that's directly adjacent to the driving license center. And that was our main interest. The discussion that I've had a couple of times with the county administrator, Jamie, and what I attempted to convey in our original meeting was that we have experience in other projects where there have been sensitive environmental conditions, and we've, you know, and if those environmental conditions exist on the properties that we're proposing to purchase or that we have purchased, we work with the appropriate agencies to protect those, those areas to either meet or exceed our legal obligations or the desires of the community and the townships in which we work. In situations where those sensitive environmental parcels are nearby, or in this place, in this, in this area, a circumstance not part of the proposed development, you know, my intention was to certainly propose a solution and advise on how that might be accomplished. You know, if there's specific cost to the county as a result, and this I think leads to your second question, if there's specific cost to the county as a result of. In situations where those sensitive environmental parcels are nearby or in this place, in this area, a circumstance not part of the proposed development, you know, my intention was to certainly propose a solution and advise on how that might be accomplished. You know, if there's specific costs to the county as a result, and this, I think, leads to your second question, if there's specific costs to the county as a result of evaluating and monitoring our proposal, then we would certainly not want to inconvenience the community or work through our due diligence in such a way that it causes an undue burden on the county. So, I mean, if you could perhaps detail specifically what you have in mind, I could try to, you know, accommodate that. But, you know, I want to be very clear. We have never had any interest in the wetlands. And in every exhibit that I've shown to the county, it's been very clearly stated that that's outside of our development and that...
To make it perfectly clear, the property is only available if it's subdivided, which would be, right now, it's preserved through the county, but to be subdivided would preserve it. To facilitate that, it costs money to do the subdivision. It was my understanding that your company would pay for that subdivision as part of the process.
I think our intent was to pay for the subdivision of our parcel, and you're suggesting that we also pay for the subdivision of the portion of this exhibit that's delineated as wetlands. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
So, you have this exhibit in front of you. You're talking about the hatched area, which is an approximate triangle to the west of the road.
Yes. It's one parcel to subdivide it would be the only way to preserve it.
I don't have an engineering training. I couldn't advise on whether or not a subdivision is required for any sort of conservation easement or any sort of protection. I mean, the wetlands themselves are unprotected.
If it's all one property, how are you going to buy it if it's not subdivided?
We were proposing to subdivide the parcel that we would like to develop.
And do the description of the deed for the parcel for the county as well. We would end up, you would end up with two deed descriptions instead of one then, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, you would pay for all of that?
Let me just see what the work, how we work on this, so I don't want to speak out here.
Can I try to clarify?
Yeah, sure.
I think what is being discussed here is that the area on this, on the exhibit, it shows the hatched, the hatched area that defines the wetland. Presumably, that would become its own parcel that would be transferred to a conservancy yet to be named, I'm not sure. But, that would be a separate parcel. If you were to purchase then the four point five, four, four and a half acres, the county would only be remaining with that rectangular piece that goes from Career Drive out to the back of the fire school. So, two parcels would come out of this one.
In other words, it would have the surveys and that sort of thing, filing fees, and that all should be done at their dime because they want to buy the one half for development.
So, what's being asked is if you were, if you would be willing to not only subdivide the parcel that you're interested in, but then to also subdivide off the wetland area so that the county can transfer it off to a conservancy.
And I don't understand how one can be done without doing the other. I'm just saying, who's paying for it?
Well, it could be done without doing the other because then the parcel would remain this, this sort of pennant flag shape without that. So, there would still be a, there is no dividing line right here going across Career Drive. So, the parcel would end up being this without that.
But the parcel that remains has to have a deed description.
Well, it would say that this was divided off. Maybe you can explain that.
Well, so, I want to, I want to make a couple of points here before moving along. So, the purposes of this drawing is to illustrate a property description of the parcel that we wish to purchase. It is not intended to be a legal description of the current property or to be an exact survey or anything like that. So, you know, and I don't know what the exact boundaries are of the larger county parcel because there were a number of different tax records that we drew up, that we pulled when we originally drew up this agreement. And I know that we did, in fact, change it at one point because we didn't have exactly the right deed number. So, what I, what I, what we could do is we could, you know, we could look at ways in which this wetlands can be protected, but I certainly couldn't say that we would pay any and all costs associated with that because I don't know what they are right now. And I don't know how big the property is, and I don't know what surveys would be involved or additional fees or anything like that. So, it's outside the scope of our development, and we would be happy and willing to cooperate with the county in any way possible to the extent that the county wishes to preserve the wetlands. We, you know, we support that. But I can't, I can't promise that we would pay any and all costs because I don't know what those are. And I don't know what the larger description of the property is. We haven't been able to actually see that. So, we do our survey, work in the survey, the boundary of the proposed development. Because, for example, if this is, say, this is, it could be, I think at one point there was a thirty or forty acre parcel.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
We wouldn't be able to survey the boundaries of the entire thirty or forty acre parcel. It's really beyond the scope of what we've contemplated.
So, I think Dave's seen this, I believe, that this, what we, what we still own is residual of a very large piece of property that went all the way over to behind Med Ed, which is where the Alm's house eventually originally was. I mean, this goes back to the eighteen hundreds, I think.
Yeah.
This deed. And so, just as, as pieces were parceled off, including the prison, including Cedar Haven, including the CTC, you know, over the, over the years, over the hundreds of years these have been, have been deeded off, this is still the residual. So, that's why the deed is somewhat complicated.
If Commissioner Litz's point is that their subdivision would accomplish that this one parcel would be broken into two, is what they're proposing right now. If she's suggesting that this one parcel be broken into three effectively, so that this, the wetlands area be separated off, I think the point is, is kind of a fair point that the transactional cost, while you're having a survey done, you're preparing legal descriptions, and you're, and you're doing a subdivision approval process through whatever municipal entity you have to go through to do that, the additional marginal cost to accomplish from two parcels, what you want to achieve to three now, is probably not that substantially greater. Now, whether it can be achieved with the required setbacks and zoning requirements for lot size and things like that, and anything else that might apply, I don't know. But just the transactional cost of the engineer and other fees and things like that, the surveyors, would not be that much greater if they're already on site doing that work. I understand that, if that's what I think you're saying.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
And if we want to define, I mean, I, we can make a contribution towards the wetlands conservation. I'd be very happy to do that. My concern is that, you know, to your point, I'm sorry, I don't know who you are.
Is David one of them soliciting for you?
Okay, very good. Nice to meet you. So, if we're only doing a survey, you know, in this direct vicinity of the property, and we're only doing subdivisions regarding that, I agree with you, there's, there is a marginally increased cost of doing so. I mean, it might be double, but it's not going to be orders of magnitude greater. However, if we're going to be required to survey a much larger territory because that's how big the existing piece is, and to do a deed description for the remaining thirty acres or whatever it is, that could be in addition, that could be significant thirty, forty thousand dollars of survey costs. That's what I'm uncomfortable committing to.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Certainly, a greater cost to be...
I'm comfortable making a contribution to the wetlands, but I would want, you know, within reasonable limits, I guess, is how I would...
Dave, what would it normally cost to do a subdivision for a wetland of that size?
I couldn't even begin to speculate, honestly. I really couldn't.
To survey it and come up with a deed description.
If we have folks from county planning here, maybe they could give us a better idea, but I really couldn't begin.
I'll give one example to subdivide Cedar Haven and to prison, which were all on one, all in one parcel at one time, I believe, was eight thousand dollars to, that was a large parcel. But I think that was all included. There was representation at South Lebanon Township and all sorts of things. So, that's, to give you an idea, you know, I don't know.
So, okay, so, so...
Sure.
Yes. I'm sorry.
I'm satisfied with the contribution aspect. I think they, from the beginning, said that they would assist in that, and I don't hear anything that they're retreating from their original proposal. I think they've, they've been cooperative and responsive to our going back and forth and negotiating in good faith. And I think at this juncture, I'm satisfied with their agreement to contribute to the cost of that.
Would the contribution be not to exceed eight thousand dollars, whatever it costs us to do the subdivision?
I was going to say five, I mean, in the interest of, of, you know, an olive branch. I mean, we could say not to exceed eight thousand dollars at the time of closing to be applied towards the subdivision of the wetlands as delineated.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? And Will, John?
Yes. Yeah, I, can you share in any way what the future use of that parcel would be?
Not until we have a signed agreement, and I can talk a little bit more about the proposed development. It is a commercial policy. Yeah. We've done a number of developments. I introduced myself to the commissioners in the past, and you're...
I'm John Lattimer with the Lebanon deal.
Very nice to meet you. So, my friends have done a number of different commercial developments around Pennsylvania, the J. Paul States. We work mainly with national credit tenants. And I think the county and the community will be really pleased with this development because they've been very much, we'll obviously go through the normal planning process.
Can you tell me if the Career Road or Metro Drive or whatever that's called, is that, is that an access route or is that kind of a private road? It'd be a very congested area. I'm wondering if that, the status of that road is part of the project and whether it's a priority.
That's a good question. We have not done excessive due diligence at this stage. Only that comes once we have the property in agreement. That's when we're going to spend our money on engineering and permit or things like that. If that road is a county road...
It is, it's our only county road.
That's a county road, okay. So, then, the county would have jurisdiction over any accesses that our proposed property would have to that road. If I was going to say it was Pendon, it would be Pendon, it would be Pendon. I will say, in this particular instance, there's likely to be significant off-site attention paid because it is a congested area, because it sits on a corner with some unusual, let's say, unusual traffic patterns. It's actually part of what attracts us to this project is the opportunity to develop. So, you know, at this point, I couldn't say, you know, what the county might or might not want with regards to that road.
Do you have any developments in Lebanon County currently?
We do, yes. Can you sit here? The Sheets and Five Guys and associated businesses, seventy-two, and Rockwood Road is one of our...
I guess I didn't hear a resolution on not taking back the twenty-five hundred dollars of the first five thousand dollar deposit.
So, as I just mentioned, so we structure our agreements in order to allow us to remove any of the potential deal breakers of the time. My time is limited and my team's time, so the time is limited. We don't want to extend an agreement for a long time unnecessarily. And what we do upfront is establish whether or not the project has any potential deal breakers. There are two kinds of, we call them deal breakers. There are kinds that we can control, and there are kinds that we can't control. The things that we can't control are things like environmental problems. If we do an environmental analysis and it turns out there's contaminants, contamination issue, and the property is expensive to repair, or there's mining subsides, or there is some other, there's a historical easement that crosses the property that can't be removed. Those are the things that we discover in our title search that we do upfront. And we begin spending money to do all those engineering analysis, title searches, and other aspects of due diligence. There are also elements that we can't, that we have control over. Those are things like permitting, cooperation with the relevant authorities, going through the planning process, and things like that. So, what we want to eliminate upfront is, what we spend our money on upfront is eliminating aspects of the project that may not allow us to continue. And that's why we ask for some refundable deposit because we don't know if those things exist at this point. And so, we ask for the initial deposit to be partially refundable in order that we are not unduly exposed in a situation where we have to withdraw from the project for refundable reasons that we can't control.
If your deposit was fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, I would understand that completely, but not for five thousand. As I expressed previously, we have expenses as well. And we are cooperating with you to allow you the opportunity to develop that area. I don't think five thousand dollars split back to you, twenty-five hundred dollars, is reasonable. I think the five thousand dollars should remain with the county.
And may I interrupt that? I feel we, they and we have negotiated to this point in good faith, and I'd like to move on from this and see if the vote for the agreement as it stands with the concession on the assisting with the wetlands is going to fly or not.
I also had questions and want to make sure that you are aware that UGI worked on a pipe on the corner of that property, and I do not know if it is within the right of way or within the boundaries of that property. And 3.01 clearly states about easements and restrictions that you need notified. So, I wanted to let you know that there is a possibility of UGI being on that corner. Does that change your mind in any way?
There is, we're talking about sewer, water, or some utility that cannot on the roadway when it comes back on the property.
I don't know which it is because I don't know where the survey lines are.
Right. I don't need to do it. So, I think...
But I wanted to make you aware of it in case it is there. It says that we must disclose any rights of way, and that's a potential right of way on that property.
It's right along the road's edge, so it may be in the right of way, it may not. And then maybe other utilities there. So, my understanding is those are things that you'll sort out once you do your search.
Yeah, we'll do a title search, we'll do a survey, we'll do all of those things to establish the conditions, the current conditions of the property. I hope there are utilities there because actually it's hard. It's going to be a problem. So, I mean, I appreciate the information. It's very helpful for us. At this stage, I don't think that it changes anything.
Okay. And then my final comment, again, dealt with the three percent broker fee for the county. We weren't looking to sell it. You know, we cooperated. We shouldn't be paying three percent. We're our own agent in this case. So, I think that the buyer should be paying the full amount of six percent.
Okay. We did not approach, we approached the county, but, I mean, it's, you know, we pursue some work and then we walk away. You are allowed for some money. And the offer, and now with the addition to the subdivision costs, is in excess. I understand it's in excess, the appraisal of the property. So, that's really too compensating for these sorts of things. That was our intention anyway.
Well, I don't think it's appropriate. I'm just telling you that. I think it's, we should be paying the full six percent from the buyer's perspective. They hired Mr. Swiger, they hired Mr. Swiger, we did not. They hired Mr. Swiger, we did not.
I mean, normally our agreements are that, that actually the seller pays the whole commission.
Exactly.
Even the seller.
Not the seller, the buyer. We're the seller.
I, I understand.
But the buyer should be paying.
Normally, in our agreement, normally what we, what we do is have the seller pay for, for largely all of the broker's commission.
All right. Um, the, as concerns the, uh, not to exceed eight thousand dollar commitment, are, are you just going to put that in the form of a, of a, of a letter to Jamie or do we need to incorporate that into the agreement?
I can include an amendment to the agreement.
Okay. All right. With that, uh, additional, uh, commitment being included, do I have a motion to approve the agreement? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Have a motion and a second to approve the agreement of sale, including the eight thousand, uh, not to exceed eight thousand dollar commitment for the, uh, transfer of the wetlands. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
He didn't vote.
You might have, you might have voiced over here.
You, uh, Commissioner Phillips, you did vote?
I'm affirmative, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's a three-o.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I look forward to working with you all.
One question, yeah. Uh, BT Management LLC, where's your corporate office located?
In Altoona, Pennsylvania.
Altoona, okay. Is that where the Sheets family is from, I believe?
Uh, their headquarters, uh.
Yeah, that's right. I thought so, okay.
That's right. Uh, it allows us actually to cover the entire state of Pennsylvania from, from the center of the city.
I just, it was just a question.
All right.
Thank you.
If you'll revise that.
I will.
We'll get some.
I'll get to you soon.
Really? If it's all right with you and Jay is here, Jay Wagner is here, I'd like to, because I had that and a couple of other things on top of the proclamation request. Um, I'd like to just follow up on yesterday's discussion, um, about pension fund, uh, financing or concept of pension, pension fund financing. I just, maybe do that at this point in the agenda, and then I'll just bundle my things all together and that's all right. So, yesterday, uh, if you recall, Jay Wagner, Sessom Hana Group Advisors was here, uh, to share with you the concept of, uh, fully, fully funding the pension by means of borrowing to, borrowing the remaining twenty-four million that is, uh, that is the unfunded portion. And by the end of that discussion, um, what was concluded that is, is that if, if you're willing to pursue that any further or explore that, maybe, I guess is a better word, explore that any further or investigate that, then it would be time for Jay to seek some proposals from banks or underwriters to, as to what interest rates they might offer, terms they might offer, so that calculations could be made to compare that form of financing it to simply continuing to pay the ARCs, which include a portion of the back of the unfunded, uh, unfunded amount in it. So, basically to continue on the path that you are or to seek a financing option, he would need to get that information and run those numbers to put them before you. So, today, the question is, do you want to proceed in that regard and ask Jay to, uh, go out to banks and, and get some numbers? Is that fair? Sorry.
Yes, yeah. And, um, you know, if you, if you think this requires another conversation or work session to discuss pros and cons, we certainly can do that. But a significant piece of this analysis will be what, what is a, um, real financing alternative as opposed to us guessing. So, you know, I, I don't want to consume a lot of your work session time with, um, the concept that doesn't have merit if there's not a lender out there or if the thing is out there. On the other hand, I also don't want to go through a process if you're not ready to go through the process.
I'd like to propose that we do pursue, you know, if the numbers look like, and then have another workshop to review that and, and the concept in general. Um, I've talked with people on both sides of this, and there are pros and cons, but I think, uh, if we had more information and we could authorize Jay to do some further study, I think that, that's a prudent thing to do.
So, you're making a motion that we proceed, uh, to gain more information, is that correct?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
If I, if I might, I think, if, it probably would help if the motion included directions to, um, undertake a request for proposal process that, so that it's a little more specific as to what we've been charged to do.
Okay. Then, so, yeah, did you hear that, Commissioner Phillips?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. And you will second it? Uh, you won't second it? Okay. Uh, well, I'll second the motion, uh, for discussion. And, uh, I want to clarify that this motion does not commit this board to anything.
Absolutely. And the RFP will clearly state, uh, the county retains the right to reject any and all offers for any reason.
Okay. Uh, I, I would, uh, say that I, any decision that I make here for the folks in Lebanon County, I want to have all of the information that I can get. Uh, and, uh, duly note that Commissioner Litz did, uh, deliver on the information, and I was at that, uh, at that workshop, and I don't think I left early. Once, uh, she presented that information, I remember the presentation clearly. So, uh, we're just, uh, asking Jay Wagner to do an RFP to get information.
Yes, I have a statement I would like to read. It will take two minutes.
All right. Is that, okay. That's fine.
This concerns pension obligation bond, bonds and articles and information that I raised, obtained from Richard Dreyfus and the Chamber of Commerce that says, um, pension obligation bonds are serious risk and lousy public policy. Number one, P O Bs does not change the total indebtedness, indebtedness. P O Bs do change the nature of the indebtedness. Number two, you can amortize unfunded pensions, which are flexible. Number three, P O Bs are inflexible debt with required annual payments for up to thirty years. Number four, with the appearance of more assets than liabilities, there's a false sense of security. A, interest groups lobby for increased programs and benefits. B, Governor Rendell, uh, then Mayor of Philadelphia, once, um, took out a, a P O B, but politicians forget the commitments. And Mayor Street didn't make pension ARC because of the false sense of reduced debt, which resulted in compounded pension deficit. It backfired and left Philadelphia in even worse shape. Number five, asset performance underperforms expectations when there is downturns in the stock market. Number six, in short, P O Bs turn in a somewhat flexible commitment to a firm commitment. Also, there are political risks. Pension bonds can give lawmakers another incentive to underfund the plans. That's a direct quote from Mr. Dreyfus. Number eight, rating agency warning by Moody, a major credit rating firm issued a statement in December warning governments about the risk of using pension bonds. Quote, "We consider it a deficit borrowing and would re, and would view the financing as credit negative," by Marcia Van Wagner, the Vice President of Moody's. Finally, and most importantly, in two thousand and ten, the legislature made such pension obligation bonds illegal. So, we should not pursue it any further.
They were, you might note, that they were made illegal for the state pension funds, not for our pension fund.
If they're illegal for the state pension, obviously there was some meat to those comments.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with that, but what I'm saying is, please clarify that it's not illegal in this case.
I don't know that for a fact, but I did as much work that, as I could in twenty-four hours, I did not read the actual, but I, I quoted from the sources I, I sent.
Certainly to the extent it's illegal, um, we would not get a legal payment to enter into the transaction.
All right.
May I just, um, offer that, I, I guess I'm, I'm lost as, uh, trying to do a little bit more as we say, due diligence on these, uh, kinds of things. What is the harm in, in pursuing some more information when it just seems, and I, I may be just, this is an observation, but, you know, with all due respect to Commissioner Litz, it seems like at every turn, when we're trying to address the pension issue, you're either voting against it or you're, um, coming, your efforts are against, uh, you know, trying to protect the existing pensioners and the future pensioners. I mean, we're trying to just get as much information to get this as solvent and as solid as possible. It's, uh, at least from my observation that this is a, a trend of yours, not to want to, uh, go in that direction, to try to make it as solvent and as, as solid as possible.
In rebuttal, sir, I will quote, quote Richard Dreyfus one more time. Would you in today's world take out another mortgage on your house at three percent and invest in the stock market? It's foolhardy to trust politicians with found money and expect them not to be tempted to put it toward what's politically popular. And Eric Bone said, "Sometimes we, the cure can be worse than the disease."
I stand on my, my statement.
I just, uh, uh, spoke to Jamie this morning by phone, um, and I think we all have to recognize the, the, the weak point, or one of the weak points that Mr. Dreyfus points out, that, um, doing this, uh, bond gives a false sense of security and, uh, government agencies, politicians like we are, I suppose, uh, are encouraged to do things like COLAs for existing retirees and, uh, increased benefits and things like that, perhaps even related benefits like health insurance for retirees, which yesterday you commented, your comment was that, uh, we, we put money into the pension fund on the backs of those people that retired. It wasn't on the backs of those people. That was something that the prior board chose to give as an additional benefit, but it obviously was also, in the same sense, preserving the pension fund of those same folks. So, to make a statement that, that that was made on the backs of the retirees is, is certainly an unfair statement. So, certainly I'm not looking, uh, at this as something that I want to jump on, but I certainly don't see the harm in gathering more information. You always seem, uh, interested in getting more information and, as you indicate, do your, your due diligence. I think this is part of this board's due diligence to find out all the information that we can. But I think we also, going forward as a board, have to recognize that we can't give and continue to give. And just as I spoke against the, uh, the grant last meeting for the probation, uh, department, I, I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that we can't lull ourselves, no matter how we treat this, into a sense of, uh, we can grant these things. And I, you know, going forward, I don't think we should even consider a COLA. Uh, that's what caused a lot of these problems at the state level particularly and, and, and here as well. So, uh, I'm interested in moving forward, uh, permitting Mr. Wagner to, to, uh, go out and get information through an RFP. So, with that, I would, uh, call for the vote.
I'd have one, one short, more statement.
Sure.
Thank you. Again, doing this little microcosm of a thing without a total written vision does not set a blueprint for the future. It is ill-timed, it is ill-thought out, and we should not do it at this time.
We're not doing?
We shouldn't even, we shouldn't waste this man's time.
Okay. All right. The question has been called for. All those in favor of the motion as presented indicate by saying aye. I, I need to, I need to second the motion, I'm sorry. You did, you did not? Oh, you did second it.
Yeah, you did. You already did.
I did.
Yeah, it was on for the session.
I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Then the vote, Commissioner Phillips. Aye.
You voted aye.
You voted aye, okay. All right. The motion carries just to.
I would like to vote against it.
Yes, I'm sorry. Again, opposed, no, opposed.
Okay, by way of process, we'll prepare a RFP that we would distribute broadly to banks across the state. We've seen some peculiar interest on banks out of market, as we call it, and I'll forward that to Jamie for the county's review so that it doesn't go out without your eyes on it and your comments as to what we're asking for.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have, um, a request to make of you for an emergency resolution. I seldom ask for these unless it's obviously an emergency. Uh, in this case, one of the county's bridges, Yorri, Yorri Road, Yorri's Bridge, on Yorri's Bridge Road, it's known as Yorri's Bridge, obviously, um, has debris build up in all three of the openings that pass under the, when Satara Creek passes under the bridge. We have dealt with debris at this bridge many, many times. We have spent a lot of money to clear the debris because it poses a number of different risks and hazards, and, and first being the risk of a flood if the, if there's a high-water event and the trees catch more and more debris, the trees that are already laying across there catch more and more debris. It also poses a risk, uh, of navigation to any canoeists and kayakers that are using Satara Creek because at this point, they have to port around it. Uh, the, we don't typically see the, the third opening or the one on the, on the west side of the bridge or the south side of the bridge close because most of the flow goes through there, most of the debris gets caught in the first two, and then we go through the process of, uh, of having it cleared by an excavator. But unfortunately, recently, the third, another set of trees or debris came down through and, uh, closed the third one. So, we don't have time at this point, I believe, to go through the full bid process, which could take six to eight weeks to do. We are just now entering hurricane season. This is, uh, you know, spring rains, summer thunderstorms and so on. So, uh, we did get an estimate from an excavator. John Regal, uh, actually retired. John Regal's a name you might recognize because John was always very good at doing this for us and always, uh, very competitively priced. However, John retired and went out of the excavation business. We saw a couple of quotes. We got one back from Shuey Excavating of Annville, um, for twenty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. In the past, we've spent anywhere between fifteen thousand and twenty thousand to do this, but again, as I said, this is a little more significant than in the past. The only time it's been anywhere near this large was after Tropical Storm leave, and of course, there it even, it even breached the ridge, uh, went up over the top. So, what I would ask for, from you is a pro, or a resolution declaring that this is an emergency to get it done, foregoing the typical bidding process that the county code outlines. And if that, uh, if that's approved, uh, in speaking with the contractor, we believe that they can, they can mobilize their equipment as soon as the middle to late next week. And, uh, and then the, there would be a, a tub grinder or a tree grinder being put on site and all of the debris would be ground up. The contractor would build a temporary rock causeway into the middle of the stream so the excavator could crawl in there and, and, and remove all of this debris. Uh, we're still talking with DEP about permission to get into the stream. We believe that we have a submerged licensed land agreement for that area, for that bridge, very, for this very reason, because of the fact we've had to remove the debris so frequently. Um, and that basically gives us the ability to go in and out of there anytime this is necessary. So, Wilson Consulting is, is back and forth with DEP right now, working on that, but we want to get this done as soon as possible. This will be funded through Liquid Fuels because it's a bridge expense. And, um, you know, unfortunately, we will clear this. This will become then a, a safe passage again, but I don't have any guarantees that, uh, you know, I have. But I don't have any guarantees that, you know, a heavy rain event would come along and it would look this way a month from now. We just don't know. It's the nature of the construction of the piers of the bridge. They tend to just catch everything that comes down through the stream, sometimes big, sometimes small. We do have the, our maintenance crew and the prison detail crew that checks on this frequently. If it's small debris and the water's low and the weather's, you know, warm enough, they'll go in the stream and they'll clear out the small stuff. But again, sometimes just in a rain event alone, you obviously can't get in the water in a high water event. And in one rain event, it can be more than hands and chainsaws can get rid of. So, but anyway, I think I've set it up, you understand, I'm asking for your approval. Emergency resolution.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to approve the emergency resolution for the Yordi Bridge. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered.
Thank you. All right. Lastly, I have, are two items yet. I have, on behalf of the Community Action Partnership, I have contracts for M A T P drivers as we've done, seems like almost every week. In this case, we have a proposed contract with Douglas Siegfried, Carlos Maldonado and Marie Eva Harder at the costs that we've outlined in the past for those types of drivers. Commissioner Phillips, you have a...
Yeah, I'll move to approve that.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the driver contracts as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered.
Okay, and lastly, I have a recommendation to fill a vacancy on the Drug and Alcohol Abuse Advisory Council for Allison Gosh, who is an employee of North Lebanon School District. And if approved, that term would then expire for Allison February 19th of 2019 as vacancies in the educational category.
So, hold.
Thank you.
A motion and a second to approve Allison Gosh to the Drug and Alcohol Advisory Committee. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. No motion to adjourn, please.
So, hold.
We're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.